Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first city council meeting of December 2024. I get to sit in for the mayor again, so while the cat's away. Anyway, Julia, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please stand if you're able and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It makes good sense. Okay, thank you, Julia. That was exciting. First item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Now, these are non-controversial topics and have been vetted and/or forwarded to the full council by either the public works or the administrative committees. Do I?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Julia, thank you. Sandra, thank you, Julia, for the second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, Haley.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. I understand now why the mayor has a hard time with names.
Yeah, put you on the spot.
It's very, it's very hard.
Do you want us to do this, Sandra?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to move into the regular agenda tonight now. And I don't have any appointments for the mayor. So we will move on to the public comment and mayor's response period. So the process for this is three-minute increments for everyone. And I'm going to do three minutes based on the clock in the back of the room. So I'll try to be generous with it. You can speak about anything that's on your mind except for items that are on the agenda tonight or that are going before the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the Board of Adjustment. So would anybody like to get up and, please do, Joanne? Got to tell us who you are and where you live, too. You know, you know that drill already. You got to tell us what your name is, even though we all know you.
I'm Anita 203 South Howard. I came to say a few words about East City Park. It may be no surprise, but I know we all love East City Park. It's a gem of Moscow. It's, you know, the beautiful trees and there's room for everything in there. There's a picnic table, basketball court, volleyball, playground, beautiful list of benches with everyone's name on it. There's a plaque with my name on it for the Community Unity Award and the beautiful entrance, historic entrance. But there's a lot of concern and discussion now about the park, the stage, and what's going to be done with it. So I just wanted to tell you how much we appreciated in June when we first came to, several of us sent emails and came and talked to you about the stage. And you decided, and I quote the June minutes, "It was accepted by consensus that there would be more community outreach, community input, and financial comparison of locations before a decision was made." Also in the minutes, "It was mentioned that outreach could include displays at events at the park and farmer's market and an open house at City Hall with a question of how and where the stage should be located included in the discussion." I just wanted to say we're still waiting for that. I called City Hall and asked during the summer when this was going to happen, and I have not, I did not hear anything or see anything. Maybe I missed it. My eyesight isn't so good. I've been out of town. But anyway, I wanted to remind you that we're waiting for the open discussion and community input. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. Anyone else like to get up and give us your opinion about things? Aiden, you look like you want to. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Joanne, you get to be our solo flyer tonight. Okay, our next item on the agenda, did I, I needed to have, I didn't have to say we closed it or anything. Okay. The next item on the agenda tonight is the Citizen Commission Report, the Historic Preservation Commission, and Mike Ray will walk us into this.
Evening, councilors. So I'm here to introduce Nels Reese. He's the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, Professor Emeritus in Architecture from the University of Idaho. And Nels has prepared a lecture, presentation for this year's annual report. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to him.
Mike, if you're keeping us here for two hours with that.
Well, good evening, Acting Mayor and Council. Yeah, it's nice to know that Mike knows me. And I've been around so long that you all know that something's got to come up. And you've already seen this. We don't have to look at this. You know that we're supposed to be doing some of those words. Those are more eloquent than we can probably live by. And, but the fun thing that we do every year is to give orchid awards to people, citizens, or institutions who have made a contribution to historic preservation in Moscow. This has been a fairly quiet year, actually. And the commission has been awarding orchids, you might know, for 20 years now. So we've given 100, more than 150, in fact, 159 awards over the last 20 years. And I didn't have a picture of all our committee members. We've lost a member. We've lost two members and picked up two members. So on the list down there, you see on the left, the two that we picked up are Eleanor Evans and Shelley Harmon. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. And of course, our staff, Mike Ray, has taken care of us through these years. And Sandra is such a good help on the commission because we've had, in my 15 years I've been on the commission, we've had council members who just sit there, and we've had council members who are really vitally interested, and Sandy's one of those latter types, and we really appreciate it. As you know, the orchids can come in various ways to people or institutions or projects. Again, we're repeating ourselves, but I just want to emphasize that six, seven years ago, Sandy was really instrumental in encouraging us to have our own presentation rather than just tagging on to the ice cream social. And once again, this year, on November 14th, we had a lovely crowd. And of course, the 1912 building is just so rich. The night we were there, there were three big things going on. Our event, somebody was tasting wine in a room next door, and somebody else was playing bingo down in the big room. And so for those of you who have given money over the years to the 1912 Center, hooray for you. And it's, in my mind, it's, I can't imagine a town that has a better community center than we have. They may be as good, but they're not better. So we had a really lovely meeting again this year, and we only gave three awards this year. We typically give between two and seven orchid awards. This year, we gave an orchid award. Cynthia King was a person, one of our wonderful new members. She'd been on for four years, and she was an activist and was just wonderful. And I'm kind of feeling sorry for myself because I saw her as a possible, as a new Chair of the commission, but she's had to move on to another place up in the north somewhere. So as a Friend of Preservation for Outstanding Public Service on the Moscow Historic Preservation Commission from '20 to '24, Cynthia King. And of course, we honored her at the meeting and gave her lots of cheers, and we cried. And so there are, in a more profound lecture that I gave, I say that we've got three queen buildings. The three queens of Fort Russell are the McConnell Mansion, the House of Seven Gables, and the Jerome Day Mansion. Those three really are the big, the big people in the room, and two of those got orchid awards this year. The Leta Historic Preservation Society is working on replacing the windows. And frankly, they've let the windows go just a little bit too long. And so these windows are the San Francisco windows that are not easy to take care of. You have to get up on ladders. And so they've completed, there are three window bays, which means 18 giant windows. And they got an orchid award for completing Phase One of their plan to repair or replace endangered windows and frames in the McConnell Mansion. And they, those of us who are in the preservation world are anxious not to go with new plastic windows. We want to keep the windows. And so they found a consultant, a contractor in Spokane that would take these windows out and take them to, into their shop and rebuild them or repair them as needed. And all I can say is if you have a spare dollar or two, please send it to the, as you know, county commissions, counties in America that don't have large cities are usually destitute, and so they need your help. So if anybody here has an extra dollar, it'd be a good place to send it. The next one was an orchid award to Evan and Leslie Wilson, who own the House of Seven Gables. And this is for carrying out an, typically, we don't give orchid awards if you paint your house. We expect people to paint their houses. This is not a house. This is an exotic structure, not to be seen anywhere else in the world. And so for carrying out an extensive program of repairs, restoration, refinishing of this dramatic Mark Miller house at 325 North Polk Street. And it's beautiful now as it has been. So they're really taking great care of it. And these queen houses really need to try and look good because other people look around and say, you know, shall we keep our house as good as they do? And Evan and Leslie got our thanks for keeping this place really immaculate. It looks great right now. So I just want to remind you that sometimes we give, if you look back over the years, I don't want to bore you with a lot of orchids, but you can see individually, we go back to people like Linda Paul and Wendy McClure and the Wasson-Carrys. So people get, if we're doing particularly notable work in the preservation business, we give to institutions like the K-PAC, the University of Idaho, Catholic Church, the Volunteer Fire Department, the City of Moscow even gets an award occasionally. Yeah. And I can't tell you how proud I am of this exact building. I've been sitting in this building for 30 years at meetings, and I love every minute of it. This, there are very few people in the state of Idaho that have a City Hall of this quality, and it's being well-kept. And then, of course, residences, I think, I just need to remind, we need to remind ourselves that we give awards to the fancy houses, but we give rewards to small houses as well. So you can see that two of the houses in that list were, are something remarkable that we all might know about. The other three are just your everyday house that could be, it's historic, though one, two, two of those aren't even in a historic district. They don't have to be in a district. So just reminding you of the fun we do have and the activity that we can do. Now, as you know, a couple of years ago, we began to talk about a historic district on campus. And I think last year I told you that we, it was determined that the university probably ought to take the lead position in this activity, which they have done. And so we're working, but this is going to take several years. So I'll maybe reporting, or somebody will be reporting about this for another two or three years. It's going to take, because the number of buildings on campus is significant. And as we dig into the University of Idaho, what I want to share with you is, I'm sure the lecture that Mike thought I might be giving would be, these three, the three buildings you see here are the three oldest buildings on campus. The Ridenbaugh Hall, the Gem and Armory. And Ridenbaugh Hall, we knew who the architect was. It was an architect out of Walla Walla. And I'm all about architects, as you might imagine. And this, the Gem and Armory, we knew that the architect was Turtleot from Boise. Well, Morrel Hall was the next building built in 1906, and we've never known who the architect was. It was a secret that nobody could figure out. And a week ago, between the person, our new person, Shelley Harmon, on the committee, on our commission, and myself, we discovered that the architect of Morrel Hall was a guy by the name of Henry Black. Anybody ever heard of Henry Black? No, of course not. You don't know, you don't even know an architect. I'm going to come around and shake your hand.
That's so mean.
I'm watching you.
Does he know about Henry Black?
He doesn't know who it is. You should know who it is.
He's great.
You should.
One of your favorites.
So this is the, the lecture is the Henry Black saga. It just happens that a guy came to town in 1904, and he designed a Methodist church. You may have heard of it. And you may have even worn it on your little badge.
May have it right here.
Strangely enough, what are we doing? Memorializing a Methodist church? Is this a Methodist town? My gosh, what a deal. You can see an old picture, 1910 picture of, before paving, and then you see a new one. Henry Black was the architect who designed this church when he first came to town. However, Henry Black was one of the most prolific Moscow architects of the 20th century, and he designed at least six buildings here in town that you might know about. And in 1906, he was working on the, on the church. And you can imagine the, some of you may know that the original administration building on the campus burned down in 1905. Well, that meant that the president of the university was in serious doo-doo. He had no place to have students. They had no place to go. They went to churches all over town, any convenient library, anything that he could do. So the first thing he did is he got $25,000 worth of insurance money, and he needed an architect quickly. And we never known this until last week, but Henry Black was in town, working on a Methodist church. What do you think? And so he says, "Henry, what do you design?" And apparently, the building is not one of Henry's masterpieces, so for some reason, his name didn't hang on it. And if you walk into Morrel Hall today, you'll see a picture of Morrel Hall, and it says, "Architect unknown." And I'm going to go in there in the next few days and paste something up on the wall and say, "It's now known, Henry Black." And so if you look at this middle picture, there's Morrel Hall in the middle, and these other two buildings also built in the next year or two were geology buildings. And I'm guessing, we haven't found proof, but I think he designed that building right there. Unfortunately, I was semi-responsible for tearing it down.
Own your truth, Nels. Own your truth.
The, the Science Building was right next door to it, and when we needed a new addition to the Science Building, we decided to, and this was actually a lovely building, and the art, the art faculty hated me for a few years. Anyway, Morrel Hall and that. And then, in 1904, while he was doing all this other stuff, while he was working on the church, he designed the Jerome Day Mansion. And one of the interesting things about these buildings is that each of these buildings has some basalt in them, some black rock. And once he left town, we never picked up another piece of basalt. I'm sure that Drew is never going to do it either, unless you can just prove me wrong next year.
Sounds exciting.
But the middle, the middle house in 1908 is the Creighton House, famous store owner.
Is that facing Russell? Is that right there?
Facing Russell, yes. And you see those beautiful basalt columns on the front of it. And this is a one-of-a-kind house. Henry Black was really a talent. His stuff, this was not stuff out of a picture book. He would design it. And of course, then along came Mark Miller and said, "Well, I'm very wealthy, and I need to show off, and I want to have the fanciest house in town." And duh, he got it. And so there we are in 1911. Now, at the same time, Henry was actually doing a Methodist church down in Lewiston. So we see one, two, three, four, five, six buildings here that Henry Black designed, plus the Methodist church. And so it's really a, it was a really a fun find, and for a person, you know, you have to understand that professors sometimes do research. There you have it. Thank you.
All right, council, any questions for our esteemed lecturer?
Thank you, Nels.
Yeah, Nels, thank you very much. That was fun. That was very fun.
I guess I do have a question.
Yeah, please.
So on the, on the orchid award, on the slide that you had, where you had the people up top, and then you had buildings in the middle, and you had residences on the bottom. I'm curious, what is the metric by which you measure the restoration of houses that aren't in, like, historic areas of town? Is it like that you, I think you have to bump back up.
Come on up, Nels, sorry.
Like, yeah, do you drive around and you see, like, oh, that house looks a little dilapidated, and then six months later, you're like, oh, that house looks really good.
The thing needs to be 50 years old. The Department of Interior has magically said that if you're 50 years old, you're historic. There may be a couple people on the council that are entering in the historic territory. And so they need to be historic. But what we do is, we usually find six or seven or eight or 10 projects around town that look interesting, and then we vote on them. And so the commission, we don't always agree on everything. Gina's been our liaison on, so she knows how that goes. And what we look for is, is people who do, we're trying to encourage people not to just be forgetful of the past. And America has a tendency to forget the past. For me, I lived in Europe for six years, and it really had an effect on me. I don't think I was much of a preservationist as a young architect here at the university. In fact, I hardly paid attention to all those wonderful Gothic doors. But by the time I'd lived in Germany for six years, I realized there are smart people in the world who pay attention to these things. And so, and of course, as you know from one or two years ago, the city got an orchid for preserving the hyperbolic parabloid bank, which is just now of 55 years old, you know? So it's, it's just moved into that. So we get very modern-looking things that are now historic. But, and as far as the people are concerned, it's, we, we take the whole year to really probably debate these, these things. And we, I don't always get my way since it's a, since we get to vote on it.
Thanks. Well, thank you, Nels. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Anything else?
It's always entertaining, Nels. Thank you very much. I can attest to the lack of consensus sometimes with that group. They are a passionate bunch of preservationists, for sure.
Well, I've served on PNC for many, many years, and I've served on, and PNC is very droll. It isn't fun like historic preservation. We feel like we're really, we're not always sure we're making the world a better place at PNC. We're not. So we wait up for our leadership to tell us if we're doing good.
All right. Thank you again, my friend. Our next item is, wow, Bonnie, Personnel Policy Updates Resolution. If anybody can make this fun, Bonnie, you can.
I was going to say, oh, I get to follow that. Yeah, what did you uncover in the archives? I know, right? I was like, I'm not Henry Black, but I.
You found some old policies.
I update policies, so pretty close. We're pretty much the same.
You don't work with the salt, probably.
I mean, who knows? It's possible. Okay. All right. Well, good evening. Bonnie Denler, Human Resource Manager with City of Moscow. And I get to enthral you all for the next, hopefully, we'll get through this pretty concisely, with a number of personnel policy updates that are on the agenda for review and approval. So kind of as we get going, I just want to go through a little bit of background just on the current request and the previous resolutions that we're looking at modifying and moving into this resolution. So December of 2022, that was when the city, the council approved the adoption of the comprehensive city personnel policy document. So our large document, really pulling all of those policies into one, so there was one clear and concise document. That is the Resolution 202230 that incorporated all of that comprehensive information at that point. Last year, in November of '23, just based on changes to regulations as well as aligning internal practices, we did make a number of edits to some of those policies, and those were amended through Resolution 2325, which kind of brings us to where we are right now. Over the past year, Human Resources has been looking at the policies and just identified a number of amendments and a couple of additions to those policies. We'll go into those in a little bit more detail. There's 15 of them, so I promise I'll try to be very concise with those. But ultimately... But ultimately where these changes are stemming from is we have the addition of three paramedic firefighter positions. The addition of those positions has created a need for us to evaluate language that we have in a number of our policies to ensure that we're incorporating that employee type based on the Fair Labor Standards Act and their overtime exemption. We also have some policies that were evaluated based on regulatory changes to employment law as well as aligning some of our internal policies with our practices that we're going through. And then we also had changes to position titles. So throughout the entire document, the need to change city supervisor to city administrator, which really brings us to why we are moving forward with the request for the resolution today. Just kind of as a note, Human Resources did review all of the updates with the Employee Advisory Committee in September of this year. We did incorporate feedback into those policies before presenting them today. And if you are just so excited to get moving through all of these policy updates, in addition to all of the changes that were made to the title, what we're going to be going through are ultimately 15 changes. There are 13 updates, a policy is identified for amendment and two new policies for adoption. I kind of, to break this down and try to kind of ease as we're going through these, I wanted to first go through the eight policies that we identified for updates based on the firefighter, paramedic positions. So it's very small language up there. I'm glad I got my glasses. So chapter two, our overtime policy. Ultimately, this is where our paramedic firefighters are what are considered a partial exemption through the Department of Labor, FLSA. And so we needed to make, ensure that we were incorporating language related, related to the overtime requirements, that partial exemption. And they will be eligible for what's called threshold pay versus overtime pay based on that partial exemption. So policy was updated to incorporate that. Chapter four, our introductory period, again, just based on our paramedic firefighters. We are aligning those similar to our police and added language in there for the requirement of a 12 month introductory period. With all of these policies, in addition to adding language specific to our paramedic firefighters, we also cleaned up language. So there was some language in introductory that was related to PD that we just clarified in terms of the 12 month and what needs to be completed in order to meet that introductory. So all of the policies also incorporated just cleanup of language. Nothing that would substantially impact the intent of that policy or change the impact that that policy might have on employees. Within chapter seven, we made edits to work period. And that is just including that paramedic firefighters use what's considered a 14 day work period. So that's different than most employees are in a seven day work period. Firefighters in PD are within a 14 day, so just adding language so that we can incorporate them there. For chapter eight, we made changes in the language for floating holiday as well as for holidays. For our paramedic firefighters, they are in 4896 shifts. And so based on that shift work, the likelihood of them working holidays or even being, being able to request a floating holiday off is pretty non-existent. So similar to other agencies and how they work with their firefighters, with their paramedics, we incorporated similar language, which is that we would be doing an annual payout of floating holidays and holidays versus individuals receiving that holiday pay as they occur just because of the shift work that they're in. The other thing that we clarified within this policy was related to the payment of holiday for those that were regularly scheduled in shifts greater than eight hours. So our holiday pay is for eight hours. It's eight hours of holiday pay. We have a number of individuals within the police department, also within our public works that work 10, 12 hour shifts. And so we just clarified within the language that if you're working one of those shifts outside of the eight hours, any leave would either need to be, in that additional time, would need to be captured through leave or through adjusting work schedule for the rest of the week. We made updates to chapter eight, our paid parental leave. The change within here was just to incorporate, again, because of that shift work, when you're looking at a six week period, we define it as 240 hours for all employees. For paramedic firefighters, kind of looking at the average of what their shifts would look like for that six week period, it's 336. So just incorporating language so that we're being fair to that employment category as well. Changes were also made to vacation. And again, just adding language specific to paramedic firefighters and how they accrue their vacation as well as how their vacation is accumulated. They, within our accumulations, we have individuals that accrue either as a non-exempt employee or as an exempt employee. Paramedic firefighters are a partial exemption, so we classified them as an exempt employee. So again, just clarifying within that policy, how that would be accrued. In addition to that, we clarified some language related to holidays that fall within a vacation period or if you are sick within a vacation period. And again, just to clarify, if you are on an approved vacation period and it falls during the time where a holiday is, then you would do holiday instead of the vacation pay. And then also similar to sick leave, if you happen to unfortunately get sick during your vacation time, which does happen, the ability for individuals to claim sick leave versus to use their vacation leave. And again, that language was in the policy was just to add clarifying language in there. And then the last update that was made specific to the paramedic firefighters is related to sick leave. So again, adding language specific to sick leave, the number of hours in which they're able to accrue. That is different than the standard employee because their shifts are basically three times the amount of a normal eight hour shift. And so just incorporating language regarding how we would calculate what those accruals are and then how we would calculate for sick leave payout at the time of separation. The other thing that we updated is based on an internal practice that we have for paying out of sick leave. So we currently pay out sick leave at 15% of the amount of hours that individuals have at the time of separation. We've had a number of situations where we have individuals that are either leaving within their first year of employment or when they leave, they have maybe a couple of hours of sick leave. And so once that gets 15% of that, it's such a small amount that it's an, it's administratively more costly for us to process it through BIBA. So it was just updating language to indicate that we will be paying that out through payroll versus putting it into a BIBA account for them. So that kind of goes through the changes to the specific policies related to paramedic firefighters. So in addition to those changes, there was also a number of regulatory and internal practices that led us to make some updates to policies as well. The first being for our health benefits. Because we have made adjustments to the percentage that the city contributes for dependents, it has in the policy right now that it's 50%. We're currently at 60%. So we did make edits to that language to incorporate that we would not go below 50% to allow us that flexibility of making changes to the percent that the city covers for dependents as we continue to evaluate that and move forward. We also added language related to what the city covers for dependents when both parents work for the city. Again, this has been an internal practice where the city covers 100% of dependents. If there are both parents working for the city in benefit eligible positions, this was just to capture that internal practice that we have. Also to put it in policy, so I think individuals that might be considering that as an option, see that that is available and maybe a point of retention or recruitment. And then we also just added language related to enrollment and definitions for eligible dependents. This is just standard language based on how we define and how we determine who is an eligible dependent. It's specifically important that we define this out as it relates to domestic partnerships. And so we wanted to make sure that we are capturing and we had that within our policy. So from a compliance standpoint, that we have it clearly documented, what those definitions are for our eligible dependents. The next policy that we're looking at is for equal employment opportunity. This is a change that was needed based on regulatory requirements from the EEOC as it relates to religious accommodation requests. So specifically in 2023, there was Supreme Court decisions that basically indicated that employers needed to expand the language for denials of, of a religious accommodation and to define that we must make a reasonable accommodation unless doing so would cause a burden that is substantial to the overall context of the employer's business. Previously, the language was just that it was difficult, so it was pretty minimalistic. This Supreme Court decision did require EEOC to change their regulations and put in language that it needs to be a substantial burden to the overall context of the employer's business. So that was added out there for that. Termination of employment. Throughout the policy, we had a little bit of inconsistency in terms of how we use the term termination versus involuntary termination. So specific when we were evaluating the sick leave policy, there were edits made to that to refer back to involuntary. In that policy, it indicated that payout isn't made upon termination. Well, termination is a broad term that we use for all types of separation of employment, voluntary and involuntary. So it really was just to make edits to the sick leave policy, but also to ensure that our language was consistent throughout in terms of how we are viewing termination versus somebody who is discharged. And so using the term involuntary. Additionally, within that policy, we also reference retirement, but don't define it. So it was defined in the policy this time around. Rest and meal breaks. This is another edit that was made based on regulatory changes, specifically the Department of Labor and FLSA requirements that employers provide nursing mothers with a reasonable break time. And that's under the most recent POMP Act, Providing Urgent Maternal Protections to Nursing Mothers. So we did add in language specific to adhering to those regulations and including that rest time kind of as part of our rest periods for all employees. And that, that is covered under the 15 minutes of paid. And then including language regarding accommodating individuals that need additional reasonable break time under that law. The other thing that we made adjustments to was the consistency of the use of breaks versus period. It was interchangeable throughout that policy and a couple others. So just clarifying, we updated it all to refer to rest and meal breaks versus rest and meal periods. Kind of a minor change, but it's just a, a language thing to ensure that we are consistent throughout. And then bereavement leave. We made some changes to bereavement leave and this was based on clarifying what is defined as immediate household and a relative. Our policy, our previous policy updates incorporated language that was specifically related to nepotism, to the state nepotism policy. And so it was just looking at what our intent was and who the city was looking at covering under bereavement and just clarifying and explaining those a little bit better. So the policy just went through and made edits to the definitions for immediate family, household and relative. All right, we're getting through them. Down to our last two new policies. So we've got two new policies and these are based again on internal practice and wanting to formalize those. So within chapter eight, the inclement weather and emergency closure, adding language specific to internal practices related to what we would do during inclement weather, emergency closure. This was prompted by the last year's gas situation. And so really wanting to just formalize what we did and ensure that we were being consistent moving forward if there was to ever be emergency closures in the future. And then the other new policy is adding within chapter 10, a confidentiality policy. And again, we have confidentiality requirements for all employees. This is just formalizing that and then also requiring an acknowledgement of employees at the time of hire and then every three years. All right, that went through them. Look at that. So at this point, I am recommending that we approve the proposed resolution, but certainly want to open it up to questions, clarification. I know I went through all of those very quickly.
What a mammoth pile of minutia, ma'am. That was a lot. Thank you for caring enough to go through all of that. Wow. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Bonnie?
Besides echoing, it's a lot of
Oh, it was a lot.
I appreciate the updates. They look great and, you know, are very considerate of our employees and what life is really like. I don't know how to say it, like updating the bereavement policy and things like that, you know? That's kind of, that's great. It's the reality of, of what people's families look like. So, thank you.
Gina, I've got two. And I, I was glad to also get to go through this with the admin administrative committee last week. Bonnie, I just want to understand, like, and I may be myself answering this question. The question I wrote was why paramedics are able to accrue more hours in other roles? And is it due to like existing other legal decisions or union decisions? Or is it also just given the nature of the role that it's assumed? If you're going to work more than 40 hours in a pay period, that you'll take, you'll, it'll take more leave to be able to make the role equal in terms of vacation to a different non-paramedic role? Yeah. So vacation, the accruals are the same as all employees because that again, is something that you can accrue when you can take in increments. The sick leave, however, when we look at the use of sick leave, employees accrue eight hours, which is equivalent to a shift. Our paramedic firefighters work a shift that's 24 hours. And so if you have a paramedic that needs to call out sick, they're not calling out for eight hours. So it really is just to accommodate that they are working these shifts three times the amount of others. And so it's just from an accrual and a use for that, for them to be able to take sick leave for their entirety of their shift. Now, at the time of separation, that accrue, what they've accrued gets calculated down by three. So it gets divided by three, so it is paid out, similar to our other employees. So they're not going to be paid out at a higher accrual rate for any of their leave. Yes, okay. It is just for the use of their, to be able to say, I, I need to be out. Right. We're allowed to be sick. Yeah, we're allowed to be sick. So I mean, because if you think about it, how long it would take them to accrue 24 hours, to take 24 hours of sick leave. Right. Then you're talking about, it would take, you know, three months. Well, if you're, if you need to be out for both of those shifts instead of, it would take six months to accrue. So it really was just to kind of align those. That also is consistent with practices of other agencies and how they utilize it. Yeah, yeah, we met with, we met with an individual down in Lewiston just to kind of review rules so that as we were developing it, we were thinking about all the policies and all the stuff that we needed to. And so that was something that we looked at is in terms of other agencies and how they did some of their policies. That was pretty consistent.
That helps. And then I realized this didn't come to me until just now, so we don't have to address it. I, I probably could have floated the same topic last week. I realized that this is the stage in which last year, we had the conversation about extending paid parental leave from four weeks to six weeks. And we're at six weeks and, you know, my pipe dream is for us to not only stay competitive, but for us to do the right thing when we know there's an infant childcare shortage in the area. And I'm like noodling on like, is it silly for this to be the point at which I'm like, what would it look like for us to bump that up to eight weeks paid leave? Because I know there's impact to staff. I also don't feel great doing that, knowing that Mr. Mayor is not here and we've got Gina acting as president, but
Well, and this isn't to update, right? This is just to approve what she's already come up with.
Well, and this isn't to update, right? This is just to approve what she'd already come up with.
And so I realized like, that's why I'm like, I should have, I should have been verbally processing this last week in the administrative committee meeting. So I guess with that, not, not asking for any changes, I guess I'm curious how the six weeks of paid leave has, has been used by our, by our staff so far since the change, if, how, how things have been going with the change from four to six.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly can't speak to prior. I know that I have worked with a number of staff over the last two years that have utilized and are very grateful for that six weeks. So I mean, I can certainly speak to that, just in terms of individuals being grateful that they have that. In fact, some individuals, when they are meeting with me regarding what their leave options will look like with the, you know, the birth of their upcoming baby. Some of them don't even realize that they get that. And so it's an added benefit when I'm like, you actually get six weeks paid and they're like, that's great. So I mean, it's, it's definitely being utilized by our staff and they are very appreciative of that use, even with the six weeks that are offered, which is more than a lot of agencies offer. So.
Yeah, and I know there's a trade off to having someone gone. I just, I, when we talked about it last year, and I still feel really strongly that it's the right thing to do, even though that we know there's a trade off from someone being absent from a work position for, for six weeks. And I also know that, I'm guessing for a lot of the new parents, you're talking about probably spending all six weeks trying to find out where you have infant care lined up for after. So I guess with that, we review by resolution every year, the Personnel Committee Handbook. Is that right? Or only when changes come forward?
No, it's really only as, as changes that are identified that are need to be made.
Okay. Okay, I'll put a pin in it and I can email city council leadership, but.
Right on. Something like that would be appropriate for budget, right?
If I remember when we had this conversation last year, there's no impact to budget because you just, you plan as if the person's there in a lot of ways.
There are some impacts, especially as you look at law enforcement to pay overtime to have other people cover shifts. Because it, it has been utilized fairly widely and while we are short staffed, it has presented some challenges. But budget would probably not be the appropriate time for us to talk about it. If it is something that the council would like us to review on independent basis, we certainly can do so.
I guess, yeah, I guess I'm curious for a holistic review of how six weeks has been and curious what my council VP and President think. Curious how the six weeks has been received, if it's been used, if, what the unexpected surprises have been. Because pipe dream would be for, I mean, get us to eight weeks, two solid months. We, there really is no infant care in the area unless you know somebody who's doing it out of their home or a grandparent who's staying home. So. But I don't want to suggest eight weeks without fully understanding what six weeks has, has impacted our staff so far. So curious what the crew thinks.
If you would, please.
I will. I'm happy to package it in a formal email for it to be discussed when Mr. Mayor is back from Boise.
Yeah.
Let's just make a decision now.
Where's my hammer at?
It would be helpful though, just to know what avenue to look that, to look at that up, because I don't know what that would be.
Yeah, I will. I'll start with the, with an email ask instead of putting everyone off the cuff.
Right on.
With answers.
Any other discussion?
I'm just appreciative of all the work that you, you've done here, Bonnie.
Well, thank you.
It's tremendously.
It's a group effort. Lots of people reviewing, lots of people's eyes.
Pass along our gratitude to your team.
Thank you.
And I, I move to approve the resolution if there's no discussion.
Okay, Bryce and Julia, thank you very much. That was a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, Bryce.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Sandy, sorry. Drew.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Bonnie, really. This is impressive. Thank you very, very much. Your team rocked this one. Okay, I don't have any ordinance or anything I need to, is this, okay, good. No surprises, no surprises.
The look that Sandra just gave you.
That's what Nell's called you all night, Sandy. I don't know why your problem has. Our next item before we get into a rumble is the City Shop Replacement Project Bid Award, Cody Riddle. Hello, sir.
Hello. I'm excited, excited to bring what's probably a long, especially if you ask like Steve in the audience, a long overdue and, and much needed project to counsel for, for consideration. It's not, I want to be clear, it's not, not an upgrade. There's certainly nothing luxurious about this. I'll kind of go through some of the history, but it's absolutely needed out of necessity. The deficiencies in, in the city shop facility have been noted for years, dating at least back to the 2016 strategic plan that a former, former council worked on. It was one of the top priorities. And then again, I believe in 2022, it was listed as the, the fourth priority or fourth, both, fourth most significant issue facing, facing the city in terms of facility needs. It was right up there with identifying an alternative water source, some of the emergency communication equipment and then EMS staffing. Certainly, as you're well aware, we've addressed most of those, but not this. So it's probably one of the most pressing needs that we, we face today. In terms of existing conditions, it's very clear. It's a critical, critical facility for the delivery of a lot of our essential services. The facility was, the existing facility was constructed in 1968. I do not believe it was designed by Mr. Black. But all kidding aside, I don't want, don't want to make light of it. To say it is, to say it's in poor condition would be.
Putting it lightly.
Putting it lightly. There's inadequate restrooms for the staff that are there, certainly when, when we ramp up for seasonal operations. Some of the workspaces are unsafe, doesn't provide, certainly not a professional working environment. And I think, and I'll share a video here in a sec, many of you, if not all of you have seen, in both 27 and 2019, we actually, during flood events, actually had floodwaters flowing through the, through the facility as we were trying to maintain operations. Certainly, the maintenance and functions and fleet have grown significantly over the past several decades with no real expansion in, in the facility itself. The current shop is right about 20,000 square feet and that 2016 study showed that we needed about 76,000 square feet to accommodate our needs. Here's just, just a taste of the, the facility. And I think it's, it's pretty compelling to see the, just, this is probably right outside Steve's office, I believe.
Where's the trout?
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. So again, pretty, pretty powerful, powerful imagery, just to help emphasize the need for this facility. But based on, based on that need, and again, consistent with the strategic planning efforts of a previous council and this council most recently, we did advance the city shop project earlier this year. Design and construction funding were actually included in both fiscal year 24 and our current fiscal year budget. Based on that, we engaged Lombard Conrad Architects earlier this year in February to work on a design effort for the, for the facility. That design was developed over the course of this year and we started from that 2016 a study that I referenced that, that identified that the spatial needs for the various departments, divisions that use it. We noticed, we noticed, or noted very early on about the 50% design stage that we needed to, to explore things a little further in terms of cost, cost containment. So we did work, work with, work with the design team on that and our own internal staff that will use the facility for cost saving measures. Most significantly, a wash bay was eliminated from the interior, the center, center of the building. That was significant and reduced not only the, the floor plan or the footprint of the building, but reduced the paving required to access it. And most significantly, because the building shrunk and was shifted slightly to the south, there was a fair amount of fair reduction in grading and retaining wallwork, which were two of the higher priced items associated with the project. So the project ultimately that went out to bid was wrapped up again earlier this late summer, early fall. The project that went out to bid included a base bid for a 18,800 square foot shop, the new building. You can see here, it included an alternate or a deduct alternate to that building for an inferior siding, siding product rather than the old, the, the pre-engineered insulated panels that are, that are on the building. It included a second alternate for the dry materials storage shed. And then a third alternate, which is the re-cladding or re-roofing of the existing shop building that we will maintain and, and hope to get another 30 years of life out of the streets, streets and stormwater groups will still continue to use that, that building. It does have a little bit of, a little bit of life left back, back in it. So bids for the project were, were opened in November of this year. As you can see here, bids, and I should note that this, these numbers that I'm comparing don't include the deduct alternate for, for any of them. But they range from just over 7.2 million to 11.2 million dollars. The engineer's estimate was about 6.1 million. And then the lowest bid, lowest responsive bid from Wellens General Contractors was just over 7.2 million dollars. I would note that they're the contractor that we did work with on the police station facility. The lowest bid clearly was, was higher than anticipated. It was about 18 and a half percent over the architect's estimate. We weren't entirely shocked, but certainly, certainly disappointed in, in the numbers. But we are confident in the numbers we, we receive. We did receive seven bids, which, which is great for some of the other projects we've put out recently. And three of those bids, the lower three of those bids were fairly, fairly close. So that gives us a lot of confidence in that, you know, that it is true representation of the cost to construct this, this project. Talking with the architect a little bit, you know, some of the steel work, earth, significant earth work and retaining, retaining all work were kind of wild cards as they prepared their estimate. And we're still seeing a little bit of volatility in the bidding, bidding environment. So again, not disappointed, but not entirely shocked. I think if we saw, you know, a single bid or one or two bids that were, that were significantly higher, it might be in our best interest to rebid the item. I think in this case where we had seven, seven, seven separate bids that, that if we were to go out to, to rebid, I think the project would almost certainly only go up in, in cost with that delay. Given that it's a critical, critical facility, key to our strategic initiatives, we do believe it's in our best interest to proceed. Now, from a funding, funding standpoint, funding for this project, again, if we, if we proceed, combined with a minor remodel that, that we'll coming back to you on for the, of the existing shop building, we believe we have 30 plus years of life in the, in the overall campus or the facility there. We have identified funding for the project in its entirety. Be from a combination of the funds you see on the screen, general, general capital and water, sewer and storm. I think it's also important to note that a significant portion of this project will be funded through our remaining ARPA funds, about 3.6, 3.6 million. And we had anticipated even dating back to last fall, that those funds would be used towards, towards this project. And we're required to obligate those funds by the end of the year. Lastly, on that front, between the ARPA funds and capital accumulations, where we have been saving towards this project or accumulating funds, there would be no, absolutely no impact to the, to the taxpayers to fund, fund this project. We have the, have the funds to do so. So with that, our recommendation today is that you accept the low bid from Wellens General Contractors for that base bid and then alternatives two and three, which were the dry material storage shed and then the re-cladding and re-roofing of the existing shop building. And then consistent with our other contracts that staff has authorization to approve change orders that don't exceed 10% of that contract amount. And with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
I have a question. Okay, Sandra.
And I'm not quite sure who to direct this to, Cody, because it just popped in my head. Otherwise, I probably would have asked you earlier. And I do not mean to open a can of worms by any sense. We've heard a lot of talk, or at least I have, probably all of you too in the last couple of weeks about tariffs and how prices could skyrocket. Again, how are we set? I know we can't see the future. I, I'm aware of that. But if things do go up quite a bit with some of the talk that's been happening, are we, do we have a plan B for how to cover things?
Well, I think, I think our, if we were to go out to rebid or something, we'd need to look at a plan B. I think that's why it's in our, in our best interest now to lock in this, this contract in this amount, given some of that, that uncertainty in the market.
And I wonder if the bid numbers also reflect a little bit of that.
In, in speaking with the architect, they wonder especially around, they mentioned specifically steel, that there may be a worry about just changing environment out there.
So if I can clarify, I mean, this is a binding bid, the contractor. Excuse me, the contractor will be obligated to deliver the project for this price. So independent of any cost escalation, materials suppliers or subcontractors. So we do think it's in our best interest to take advantage of this bid now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Haley.
I'm going to ask the one I asked during admin committee, which was, we've got the, the blueprint that shows us that it's next to the existing shop. But if wanted on, on the record and for our avid audience and people watching at home to confirm that this, the new shop can be, can be done with minimal impact to existing city operations. Is that right?
That, that's correct. We've, we've talked quite a bit internally as a staff and preliminarily with, with the architect and if awarded with, with the contractor, staging and phasing of the construction will be, will be critical to maintain operations. But yeah, the citizens will see no, no laps in or gaps in service.
I think just to follow up on that, because that was something that I wanted to just clarify and said as well. If, if this gets approved, construction starts in the spring and estimated to take about a year?
That's correct. Yep.
Thanks, Cody.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just concerned that we are a million dollars over, you know, what we had anticipated for this project. And I think that we need to think about not including the alternative two and three with the contract so that we are more in line with what we were planning on. I, I recognize that we need a new shop. And that, that people deserve a professional place to work and, you know, it's just a, the cost of doing business in the city. But I am concerned about the cost and that it's, it's turned into a significantly large project at 7.248 million dollars. So that's my, that's my concern, that it's, it's, it's pretty far above what we had anticipated.
Gina, could, could we ask for the clarification on what the three alternates? Like what they're replacing? Because I, I feel like during admin committee, one thing Cody was able to speak to was alternate three about like patching the literal holes in the roof of the existing shop and what we're hoping to, what we'll get out of the alternates that staff is recommending we pursue and what they're replacing.
Please do.
So certainly I'll, I'll try to do so that, so the dry material storage shed here, a lot of those materials are stored outside, outside or exposed. There's minimal, minimal storage for some of those materials.
It's like sand and salt, right?
So that's sand and salt for snow removal operations. We currently have kind of a fabric sheltered Quonset hut type structure that is at its end of life. So we're going to need to incur that cost now or later. That one particularly did come in under the estimate by about 30,000. And there are some, you know, I understand the concern about the, the cost overrun, the project being larger. But there are going to be some economies of scale that we're going to be able to achieve with having the contractor on site, erecting the new metal building, installing the new cladding and roofing system, the same one they're installing on the new, new building on the existing shop. Because we do have two existing needs, the city, the current existing shop leaks significantly. And pretty much every fastener is at end of life on that kind of an old style metal roof. So that is going to need to be addressed. Our, the bid we received back in, this was in 2021, was about 300,000 just to do the roof. We're, we have a bid for 500,000 to do the entire exterior of the building, all walls, all roof system, to get another 20 to 30 years of life out of that facility. Because, you know, we are, this new shop is going to accommodate fleets, it's going to accommodate parks, but we're still going to have streets and storm operating existing shop building where we have leaking happening on electrical equipment and computer equipment in that building. So that will need to be addressed and I don't think we're going to be able to do it at the cost that we'll be able to achieve with this current project bidding it today as one singular project. We were able to, during the open budget process last year for the FY24 budget, we had an additional three. budget, we had an additional three million accumulation that we were able to put into capital projects to be able to absorb this additional cost. So it certainly is staff's recommendation. We, we recognize, you know, the increase in cost. But we do feel it's not gonna get less expensive and we're not gonna be able to take advantage of the economies of scale of having a contractor inside to take care of all these one point in time. And we have the capital accumulations over the last, over years to be able to fund this project. So we would encourage council to take those alternates.
Sandra?
I, I recognize the, the price issue as well, and I believe I brought it up in our administrative meeting. But, um, and looking at this though, I think it'd be a much bigger hit to not approve it now and have to patch it up probably in the immediate future anyway. I think, I think this is our best shot. I'm grateful that we're able to do it at this price. And I think this is, um, while a bit of sticker shock, I think this is the right thing for us to do and, um, the most economical thing for us to do as well.
Haley?
I've got, yeah, two thoughts. When we're talking about rain leaking through these buildings, like I also, uh, when I, when I toured the shop after first being elected with the crew, one, they're the smileiest crew that are happy to plow your streets in the middle of the night, um, which I really appreciate. But the other thing was, uh, learning what we've been able to bring in house as far as cost savings to, uh, retrofit or, or I guess not even retrofit, outfit our like Moscow Police Department vehicles. And so I'm thinking as far as it's not just about streets, it's, it's also about public safety and the, and dignity of work for the folks who are in the departments. But the other thing, I, like I realized seven million dollar, we don't, the city of Moscow does not spend seven million dollars on construction projects every day. I know this is not a glamorous one to be able to speak to as far as like city, it is not, um, visible in the same way as what other folks would maybe like to see. But, uh, I know for the longevity and our, our fiduciary responsibility to make sure the investments we're making when we buy a new plow, uh, when we buy sandbags, when we have volunteers handing out sandbags to our citizens, it makes sense, um, that this little puddle off the end of Polk, um, makes sense. And so I, I understand the concern. I also know that from, the bids came in beginning of November, is that right? When bids opened and closed?
Yeah.
For what it's worth, they came in after election day, the bids opened. And I know, I, I can't speak to every company. I know that, um, and I, I just know from the conversations I've been a part of at work, like the tariff conversation and what those impacts will be have been a topic of conversation since immediately before election day and after. And so I really am hopeful that the numbers and why we were, there were some sticker shock for us was some insulated, um, ha, ha, pun intended, I guess, for cladding, um, uh, insulated, uh, numbers, estimates from those engineers, because it, it, that we, there, we know there is a risk if, um, tariffs are, uh, put in place to not, to nearly, to, to some of the most significant industries. So I, I, I would like to move that we accept the low bid from Wellens General Contractors Incorporated, award the contract for the bid amount of seven million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, which includes the base bid and the alternates two and three and authorize staff to approve, I'm sorry, authorize staff approval of construction change orders in an amount not to exceed ten percent of the contract amount.
Second. Okay, before we go any further with that, there is still some residual discussion we need to have. So thank you for that motion and the second.
Drew?
Yeah, I'd like, I just wanted to hear from other counselors, um, before I ask some questions. So I'll start with, um, some questions after reviewing documents and then I'll work my way into some procedural questions. So I recognize obviously the video, um, and I'll tour the building, been there twice. Yeah, I agree with everything, what, what staff and where we've gone is, yeah, like we need a better facility. And I, and I, although it's not open, I'd say to the public, it's, this building is keeping the public open, right? So, um, therefore it has some bit of glamour in my mind, right? It might not be, uh, you know, um, I don't know, it's not a, a place that we gather, but it's a place that is important. But so through this process, with the design team, cause this is a design team question, how, and I guess it'd be more from a civil aspect, through a grading procedure when we're talking about the site, or how are we looking about that that place doesn't flood again? If we're going to the efforts of re-cladding it, which I like, I, that is one of the ways I can go home, right? Um, yeah, it's not very pretty, but like, how, how, how are we ensuring that? I, I freaking hope we, um, that's, the new building's not gonna do that, sorry.
That's, that's correct. There's actually, it doesn't show up on the, on this drawing, but, um, you obviously can't change the finished floor, really can't, simply change the finished floor elevation of the existing building. We did ask as part of the civil or the site improvements for, um, an extruded curb kind of back there along the, the back of that property to divert, um, in an attempt to divert floodwater around that building. And then the new building, if I'm not mistaken, we set it finished floor elevation, I think eighteen inches, two feet, um, higher. I'm just, just about as much as we could have functional, um, paving service, surfaces, um, between the two, so.
When I had to dig through this one hundred, this one thousand, uh, one hundred and seventy-one page and I found the finished elevation, but I, um, and, uh, truth be told, I, I love putting these documents together, but, um, um, they're not fun to search through. But, uh, the, I, I just didn't see that, how we're gonna mitigate that. I don't, I mean, yeah, I, I, I don't know if that, so, so where's the water being diverted?
So, so generally the water currently comes, you know, off a pole, kind of runs through the shop and then runs down Van Buren Street. And so the plan is to put a, a curb line on the south side of the building, so it direct it and then grade a gentle swell. So it essentially follows the same path, but just won't go into the building.
And, and so we're not taking it, 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 I mean, we're, I, I, I mean, I'm not asking us to get golf balls and roll them down the hill to see where they go. But like, um, I guess where's the water? It's not going into how, I mean, it, it's just going to Van Buren?
It's going down Van Buren and again, kind of following its way throughout that area. I mean, whether it's going through the shop or it's going next to the shop, it's going, it's gonna be going to the same place.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's not.
The Hog Creek Box Culver, when it reaches capacity at that point, is gonna surcharge and it's gonna then flow overland. And it's just happened currently, it just, it's following the lowest point in the shop was placed right adjacent to the, you know, the creek when it was initially constructed before the box culver was placed. And so it's just, we're just gonna be running it south of the shop and then into Van Buren rather than through the shop.
Okay, um, I, I can buy that like eighty percent. I know there's not a lot we can, and I'm not saying that anyone's like, there's not any, I, I, I just, boy, that's, it's just an unfortunate circumstance. That's, I mean, how, how it is, but.
It is, and, and long-term Hog Creek capacity needs to be increased. And we need to start at the bottom end of it and work our way upstream to be able to accommodate larger scale events.
Yeah, um, okay, yeah, I, I, I don't know who the civil engineers, but I'll try to have faith with that approach. The, uh, second one, well, that's all the other questions. So like, I, I recognize, again, going back to this, like, yeah, from just how our employees need to utilize the space, everything they do, I, I, I do recognize that, yes, there needs to be a better facility. And, um, I think oftentimes when we're, when we're constructing new facilities, um, we don't, I mean, when I was there, they were working on a, something for the fire department. I don't know what engine it was, a police car. Then some poor individuals out in the snow on his back working on something, right? So like, I, I get the need for it and I don't think most people in the community know, I, I say this all the time, we do a lot with a little, um, and, and we do a tremendous job at it too, right? But being a million dollars, almost over budget, that like really hits me in the gut hard. And I just have to get that on the record and we can put hitting the gut hard, cause I mean, that's how it hit me. A, and I get that. And so part of, I guess part of I wanna speak to is, in, in other jurisdictions, other ways, when you're going through different phases of the design process, um, it's not uncommon to have, um, a check-in where you have, um, a cost estimator, um, by the design team, um, check where you're at with the design to monitor that process. And so, um, it's usually broken down into like schematic design, um, a design development, and then it's, um, to a construction document phase. When, and it depends on how we delivered it, and I don't know what the deliverable process was. But when this is being reviewed, typically that's reviewed so we can follow what the cost estimate is. And again, uh, multiple jurisdictions, whether public or private, have different means and methods to measure that. I, I, I would like us to have a better way to measure that so we're not surprised in, in the future. And for it to be taken seriously and how Moscow wants to intend with that. Because the, now the thing that I question is that, you know, six million point, whatever it was, right? It's, it's on the screen. How was that number formulated? That, I mean, that's what I go back to, was the number that we formulated in the beginning? How, how, how sound that was? And, and I get it, we call them rough orders of magnitude. Some people call them wags, which is a wild ass guess. Like, there's just, um, there's lots of ways to, hopefully my kids aren't watching this, but, um, but, but, but the idea behind it is that, that there are some benchmarks that we can, again, means and methods that we can compare this to. Because the predicament that I think, um, that, that we're left to is, um, and how this goes before council, me as a council member, I don't know about it until I'm coming to council meeting and now I'm having to say, geez, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a million bucks. And again, that's, that's a lot. And again, I don't think it's, um, I don't think it's, I'm not looking to point fingers. I, I'm not looking to, to blame staff and I'm not looking not to, to build a building or construct a building and get it started. But I'm in a really uncomfortable situation and in this seat to say to the citizens of Moscow, hey, we're a million bucks over. Well, I, I, I want more accountability from design professionals as we move through the process. And I don't think that's a very hard ask to do. Cause I'm really doubting now that, that number that we got, that six million dollars, I mean, almost being twenty percent over, whoo, that's, that's, that's a, I mean, it's eighteen point five, but it's, that's, that's a lot. And I have to say that because that's the way I've evaluated what I've been given to evaluate, so.
Haley?
So fact-check me, Cody and Bill, we, uh, the plan that we dusted off, once we realized that it could be within reach to allocate funding for this, the schematics that the three-letter Lombard, Lombard Conrad came in and worked with us on, they didn't start from a blank sheet of paper, right? Like they were starting from something that was sketch, I don't wanna say sketched up, but partially complete design from twenty something?
Twenty sixteen was just a site planning exercise, uh, so really didn't get into really architectural, it's, it's more programmatic, um, schematic design. And it had a, at that point in time, twenty sixteen, for the complete complex, it had an estimate of about twenty-four million dollars for the facility.
Okay.
Um, and that included this as well as, um, if you, you had it on an earlier slide. Yeah, so, you know, the, the kind of stuff showing at yellow on the bottom of the page is, is really what we're constructing today. Uh, there was additional space that wrapped around to the north and a two-story that included some office space there, but the, the complete complex at that point in time, they're estimating twenty-four million.
And that was twenty sixteen?
Twenty sixteen.
And then?
And then we engaged LCA, um, in, turn of recall, was twenty twenty-two to, to do a, a site plan, which where they came up with like, an updated, uh, schematic concept and a cost estimate for us, which is really where our five point seven million came from, was from that initial study. And that's we ended budgeting. And then we went, got into design and we got estimates, I think Cody received estimates at the fifty percent and ninety percent design. Yeah, fifty percent, we, we knew it was trending north of what we had estimated, so we reduced some elements out of the building, um, to try to get it back closer to what we had originally anticipated.
Which is the fifty percent you have, and we talked about it at the admin committee.
That's where we took out the wash bay, we adjust grades, uh, we, we constrain some of the asphalt paved surface to reduce costs. That, you know, we were trending at about five point nine million at that point in time, uh, so that brought their estimate down to five point five. Um, and that's essentially where we, when it went out to bid, their estimate was at five point four and change. And it came in at the six point two. So, yeah, it's, it's, um, you know, it, it is unfortunate. I, I do feel it is the price, given that we have three pretty competitive bids that are fairly close to each other, that that is the market price, regardless of what the architect's estimate wasn't. And we are certainly disappointed that the estimate was, um, lower than what the bids ultimately were. We feel comfortable that that is really the market price to construct the building.
And again, I'm, I'm really stuck on having seen some of the other bids that were way, way higher, one or two were at like twelve million and eleven million. I mean, I'm, I, it's, I can't call and ask those contractors why they bid the numbers they did, but I really do think a decent amount of it was setting in the buffer for what steel or aluminum prices could, could ha, could look like pending whatever happened November, whatever day it was, um, election day. So, um, I hear you, I like you holding design folks accountable. I just, my other thing, I, reiterating the piggy bank, this is coming from, we have three point six million dollars of ARPA funds that have to be, um, allocated and allocated by end of year twenty twenty-four and expended, is that right, by twenty twenty-six?
Obligated by then twenty-four, expended by then twenty-six, correct.
And, um, the other buckets that we're pulling from are places that have been piggy banks with the intention of serving the, like, the capital things. And we approved, we approved the, the plan for those piggy banks to be used for capital improvements. And so I, again, I know seven million is not a sexy number for something that is not gonna be public park that we get to take our kids to. I would recommend anyone who wants, I don't wanna offer a tour on Steve's behalf, but like, I, I mean, I do think the building is really impressive, what we've been able to do for so long is impressive. If you have questions of what the seven million dollars is gonna get you, like, can't wait to, can't wait for the ribbon cutting, but I, in my mind, this is the most sound thing that we can do for both the, the security of our existing infrastructure, being cars, being our people, um, and for long-term planning. And it does suck, it does suck that it's a million more than we wanted. But I, I am not comfortable with the alternate, which is not moving forward with this or excluding either of the alternates, because any, any way you, you credit, if we reopen this bid, it's, it's gonna hurt way worse than it does right now.
So I, I gotta weigh in. I can't, I can't just listen anymore. I will tell you, I was there in the days of the twenty-four million dollar extravaganza and by the time I got done hyperventilating, we had decided it wasn't gonna be feasible. And it was, it was a disappointment at that point because our shop situation wasn't any better then than it is now. I, I don't like cost overrides or surprises with dollar bills attached any more than anybody else does. I don't. And especially a million dollars worth of surprise, it's gonna be more. But I agree with you, I think, um, I agree with Haley and I agree with Mr. Belnap to a degree that, that this, we're there, we're at the very base that we can do without, um, you know, just scrapping the whole thing and trying again in a couple of years. And I, I, we've got to get the ARPA dollars expended or at least dedicated by the end of this year. And exactly like Haley said, those other three, water, sewer and storm, will be utilizing this building very strongly and should put capital dollars into it. And there is no impact to the taxpayer at this point. So that million dollar surprise, we've managed to kind of back ourselves into planning for, which I find laudable, Mr. Belnap, in this, the time of our belt tightening. So I, I, um, I bristle and I, and Julia and I had a conversation about this today. I bristle because I don't, I don't like a million dollars extra, but this is the operation of our city and we are all responsible to put our investments, our time in and our money into making sure our city runs well. And this is that moment in my mind. Bryce, anybody else?
I've been, I've been just listening to all of you and I, I appreciate the, the feedback and the, the, the points that you're all raising.
the the points that you're all raising and I I'm just going to sound a bit like a broken record here, but I think that that, you know, what I was thinking about is communicating this to people out in town when they, when they ask and kind of inquire about how we moved for forward on something that, you know, that has such a, has such a hefty price. But I think having the dialogue that we're having is really helpful to kind of facilitate that conversation with people out in the community. And also I think that just kind of, again, reminding all of us, ourselves included, about the services that we benefit from. And the only way that we can benefit from those services is by having the infrastructure in place that allows for those services to be delivered effectively. And and also, as just mentioned by Gina and Haley, reminding folks that this is not coming from the taxpayer at that, you know, this is not, this is not related to to raising taxes on them to pay for a new shop, right? That this was budgeted, budgeted for, this was accounted for. And by using the ARPA funds and the other funds that we have to to utilize to complete this project. So I think that, yes, it is, it is a gut punch. I I like that phrase, I also like the phrase sticker shock. Because I think it is, it's very shocking to go a million dollars over what was expected. And that's a tough thing to try to communicate, but it's our responsibility to communicate that effectively. And I think we've got a really good a really great, great a really great resource, really great resources to communicate that effectively as I stumble over my words ironically, so. Yeah, so I'm I'm in favor of of approving, of approving this bid.
We do have a motion on the floor.
I I just, can I say one more thing? I, please.
Yes, you can, and then Drew can, and then I'm drawing it.
Okay, so it it is taxpayer money, it's all taxpayer money, that's where it comes from, it's ARPA money, that's federal taxes. It's it's money that taxpayers have already paid in to our budget, so it's not like magic money. But
Wait, what? Sorry. Brevity, you're right.
Stop it, Haley.
That is where the money comes from, it comes from taxes.
And I wasn't insinuating that it wasn't.
No, it's no new dollars.
It's no new dollars, maybe it was poor phrasing on my part.
And I I think it needs to be pared back. I think that it's, it is too much. I don't think this is affordable and if we're looking at seven point two four eight million dollars and we're concerned about costs of materials, they have another ten percent, so then we're looking at an eight million dollar project at that point that if this could be in terms of costs, so. That's all.
Thank you. Drew.
You've already answered one of them, Julia, I just wanted to mention this is taxpayer dollars, you said it, so I recognize it's not new taxpayer dollars, but we are regarded to ensure that we're doing, although we're not going out to the public to get more money, that money has been accumulated by that, whether federal, state or local. So it is taxpayer dollars on on those regards, but it's, we're not asking for more taxpayer dollars at this time because we've planned for that.
Thank you.
I think that's a, needs to be a clear distinction. And again, I'm not trying to be the bully in the room, but I do want to raise a voice, voice of consideration that, yes, I, the direction this is going, I support. But moving forward, if we don't find a resolution with this, I will be louder at our next meeting if this happens again. Because it needs to be, some type of resolution needs to happen. I I recognize this is where we're at and that's that's where we're at. But this, I'm telling you, I can be a mellow guy, but I can get fired up too. And the idea that if this, if a conversation does not take place about this that all council's not a part of, then I'll get my fingers typing and I'll get on a mic. Because I I want this to be talked about and I want it to be talked about with all of council, a way that we proceed with this.
Okay.
And I don't want that to be ignored.
I'm not ignoring.
I know you're not, but.
My next statement to you is going to be similar to what we asked Haley to do a few minutes ago. Get it in writing what you want us to talk about and we will bring it forward to to city administration and try to figure out, and I hear you, I hear you, I, it 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 would frustrate me as well. So so let's get that encapsulated, I know you don't like this idea because the look on your face tells me you don't.
I don't like it at all.
But you still have to write it out for me so that I can so that I can communicate it effectively to find the solution.
Okay.
How about that?
I I'm, I am happy to do that. But the conversation needs to happen amongst all council members. Because we, I I don't want a conversation where I'm finding about it at December second in another situation where I have to expend some money by the end of the year that we don't have time. I get there's lots of things that move in that direction, right? I I get all the variables that happen in there. But again, I'm in a position that doesn't allow me to be very effective in governing, I feel like. And so I want the the ability to to do that.
Sorry, I was talking to Haley, that was not cutting you off. I hear that and I agree with you. So so get it in writing as best you can and we will bring it up. Period. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. The motion was to accept the low bid from Wellens General Contractors and award the contract in the amount of seven point two four eight, which includes the base bid and alternatives two and three and authorize staff approval of construction change orders in an amount not to exceed ten percent. Are you ready? Haley.
I, and also, we got, we, I have sub free a Drew at admin committee, I, we had a week with it, so we did get it before tonight. I'm voting I.
Okay. Drew.
I, but I want it more than two weeks in the future.
Sandra.
Aye.
Julia.
No.
Bryce.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much for the lively debate. I have heard every single one of you. I'm going to propose, that's the end of our regular agenda, I'm going to propose that
Thank you, Cody.
We, yes, Cody, thank you. In fact, why don't you stand up there for the next half an hour? I'm going to propose that we pause and do not do our, or don't do our reports because, you know, the mayor always likes those. And I think we should give him a chance next two weeks from now to have his reports in this way. Okay, I love that. All right, so shall we adjourn?
We shall.
Okay, do I need any kind of all votes or anything, Bill? Okay, awesome, we're adjourned.